The insurance calls, how much is that gonna go up? We know the insurance is gonna have to go up. Oh, and I heard in one of your meetings Johnny Clever said he was gonna front the short call. Is that the short call on a hundred twenty thousand dollars of the raised donation? Or is that gonna be a short call of your final numbers for what everything's gonna cost, the stadium? You know, and then I hear we gotta do work on the track, because the tracks get more up. Money guys, where's the money coming from? I do not want paying tax, things have went up enough. Oh, here's another one. Why do you think football's gonna make it? Soccer didn't make it, and we didn't have a lot of calls involved in soccer. Is there a reason why soccer didn't make it? And we looked at those, there's no open discussion about all of it. All there was was a vote, brought up in meeting, the next meeting we voted on. You can't, you gotta talk about numbers, guys. Let's see, what else did I have? And then, all this money to raise, are we, this football club, are we running this through the school? Is this going through the athletic booster club to be spent? Are all the bills getting paid as of today? I'm just asking, I wanna know where my tax money going? That's all I have.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the regular session minutes for November sixteenth and additions to the sub list.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
John, do I have a second? It's zero one extension. Next item on the agenda is transfer payment of bills. Did anyone have any questions? We have a motion to approve the transfer payment bills.
Will you approve the payment transfer bills?
John, second, second time. The other discussion. Seven zero, motion carries. Reports, elementary reports.
Enrollment, we study across their foster children preschool, but I don't know if I've ever done that and had identical numbers across the K one, two, all the way to six, so. Anyway, three oh fours where we stand right now. I mentioned evaluate, we're doing that monthly. And in math, building wide, we're at eleven percent with significant growth in second, third grade this last, this month in December. ELA is at three percent, significant growth in kindergarten. I just kinda wanna speak to reading, but we know that we're struggling. We have kids that don't have those foundational skills met, and so what we're doing right now with our intervention groups and then giving kids and working through that is going to get us to where we can target those problems. So I do wanna speak to that, because it's gonna take a couple of years for us to get back in a good place with reading, but progress is being made and teachers are targeting the right areas and phonics program is in place now and good things are really happening there. Want to mention a Christmas concert that we had, kindergarten fifth and sixth grade were on a wonderful concert earlier this month. Great job to Mr. Vic and Mr. Tucker, kids were definitely concert ready. Pico had a very successful after-school holiday batch the other day, so I got about a hundred twenty students that stayed after. And their mission to improve the playground is, we're really pleased with that, and we've added, they have added now another shorter basketball goals, we have two of those. So they're making progress. First grade put on a Thanksgiving play for parents, great songs, lots of fun, always a hit with our parents and with our kids. Kindergarten held their traditional powwow with a large crowd in November. They were well-practiced, did a great job. Kinda wanted to mention, we had a donation for, now I've lost the amount of money, three thousand, okay, so from a community member and able to buy the gifts for some kids in our building. And so over twenty kids were really, are being blessed over this time with that money. So really generous and wonderful thing and very cool experience for us to be a part of. And then Operation Hero, we have fifteen families district-wide, we're able to go on a shopping spree with a police officer or EMT or firefighter in our community. And so we appreciate those heroes that stepped up to help our kids as well. So giving time of year, so it's just a nice feeling to know that so many kids are being reached right now. A few upcoming events there, first grade program coming up, we got holiday parties on Friday at two thirty. And then our holiday break, we'll have our staff work day on the third, and school resuming on the fourth, so. Any questions?
The reading problem, is it, is it certain grades, or is it?
I am most concerned about our second, third, and fourth grade right now. And really, if you think about that, when the shutdown happened, they would be our kindergarten first and second. So they left at a time when it was really a crucial time in their reading. On top of that, we were kind of, I think, floundering a little bit with what exactly to teach and how there was a shift in the programming. And so now we've gotten back to phonics and really got that in place right now. So I think with our K one right now, we're seeing this tremendous growth, like kindergarten growth was phenomenal this month. And first grade is growing, but our second, third, and fourth are gonna take a little bit longer, because you gotta get those foundational skills in place yet. When you get to third, you're kinda shifting from learning to read to reading to learn. But if we haven't gotten those things in place yet, we have a lot of intervention groups. So I would say if we watch that bubble go through, I hope that it continues to decrease, our concerns continue to decrease. I think the teachers are right on target, the reading coach that we're working with was blown away by the progress the kids are making. So we just kinda had a big hole that we gotta dig out of, but making the progress there, so, and they're on target, I'd say, with what they're doing. We'll just take time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
High school report. I do have three updates that I need to add to that, that we added on Friday. And then over the weekend, we have a total of eight students that's planning on going virtual this next semester. We also had two students that have been chosen to attend the National Youth Leadership Forum in Washington DC for the Anti-Drug Free Coalition of America sponsored by OCAD, Adcat. That's gonna be January thirtieth and February third. Those students will miss two days of school, and two students were playing Winslow and Ellie Monet. So both of them were chosen to go and represent us, and what they're gonna do after that is they're gonna come back and and we're gonna break up into small groups and try to see if we can enhance Drug Free Coalition, especially right before prom, I think that's really important. And then most of all, I wanna thank all the community members and businesses that showed up Saturday night for our first trivia night for fundraiser for Lynn Athletics. We raised ninety-one hundred dollars on Saturday for Lynn Athletics, so appreciate everybody that showed up for the first go-out. That was really well. I was hoping we'd raise about seven, we raised ninety-one hundred. So what we're planning on doing with that is purchase some new uniforms for basketball next year, so we can get rid of the maroon and white, go to our school colors with the red and white. So we're gonna try to enhance that, our boosters are helping out, but they have just bought varsity basketball uniforms, so it's gonna be two or three years before it roll back around. So we're gonna use some of that money and buy some varsity basketball uniforms and stuff like that. You saw the rest of the report, if you have any questions, I'll take those now.
George, there, great crowd, and that's a great fundraiser, really enjoyed it, had a great time there.
It was really good.
Excellent work.
Thank you.
Mr. Gary has tournament supervision tonight, so he's not here, but maybe he's reporting.
Okay, superintendent's report.
We also have my report, some of it is retweeted from the principal's reports. Again, I just hats off to Shannon Moore, there are sixteen scholarship opportunities listed in the bulletin that students can apply for, she's always extremely on top of that. Also lots of summer opportunities for students as well, and she really does a nice job of keeping her top of that as well. We do have a basketball tournament this week, so if you wanna see the boys and girls play, come out, we support them, they are in action this week at the Lynn Tournament. We do have two vacant positions posted right now, middle school social studies and second grade, so those are currently active as well. Our special ed teachers are Paris and then Mrs. Kingsley, the elementary counselor, Porcham. There were eighteen of us who participated in CPI nonviolent crisis intervention training on November twenty ninth. And I just wanna say thank you to those people, that was a day that they were off school, and it was a day that we could fit it in, so they came in and did training that day, which is required for us to have. And so just thank you to those people who came to do that as well. Other than that, everything else you pretty much have in your report, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Did our team from Ole Miss show up?
Yeah.
Did we know if they're good basketball?
They're playing, they were playing tonight.
They're, they're, they're.
Are they pretty good?
Yeah, they're, they're pretty good. They, I just talked to Rod Smith, and he watched the practice, and I said, so how they look, and he goes, good, goes, they say the game's a little faster here, but he's like, when I watched them practice, he goes, they, they ran the court very well, so. Get ready to start here about.
So we're probably not gonna get out in time to go watch them play.
No, and I, but I did make it clear when they were coming as well, that we were not reciprocating.
So is that the middle school position, is that just a general opening, or ship someone around?
Mr. JQ said shared, I don't know if it's.
Yeah, we move it, we move it, some people around. Coach, Coach Sampson's coming up, we're gonna incorporate a weight, strength, and conditioning, and then we also, we have to offer seven, eighth grade health, so we need to do that. So that's, that's what we're doing.
Moving on to item seven point one, move the engineering contract.
Cory is here for navigate, and I'm gonna come with you, take a lead.
Okay, so I believe everybody has a, excuse me, everybody has a memo of the process we went through for the RFQ. They issued that out on November twenty-third, I think there's a typo in there, we received the qualifications back on, I'm sorry, received on November twenty-third, we did our interviews on December third, not December night. And then from there, from our interviews, we, we interviewed all four, all three companies that responded. MMEA, which is Mid-Missouri Engineering Alliance, True Engineering, and SSC Engineers. Kinda walked through, did our background, reference checks on all of them, and there was one that really kinda stuck out, and the other two, the other two had a couple marks on their reference checks that weren't the best, and then True Engineering had nothing but great references, especially from Springfield School, it had a lot of mechanical renovation projects. We're happy, so it kind of did what we're doing here as well. So we made, we gave true engineers the tentative that we were gonna be selecting them to start that negotiation proposal, our negotiation process, to bring this proposal to you guys today. So really, the staff and the team is looking for the potential work of true engineers, and their proposal is for a, takes them out for twenty-five thousand dollars. If you go up a little bit, you'll see what all's in their scope of work. The biggest part of this project is we've got sixty pancool units in ceiling spread throughout this whole building. I think we've got like thirty branch line selectors, and then this whole system broken up five different levels. We need to get above the ceiling everywhere, they're gonna come in and shoot a lot of the existing conditions, and generate some documents, 3D laser scanning, and understand what we currently have to ensure the new design, we're not just tearing it up, but back these areas, we don't want it to say, so we're gonna document what's there compared to the existing plans, and then design something that improves what we have. Through a little bit of research, what we found out so far, I think we found the root cause of the issue. It's Reflock, it's a manufacturer, the aluminum piping, and it has press fittings. Inside those press fittings, there's a Teflon washer that prevents the dielectric, the Teflon washer has been failing throughout the country. It started to create that corrosion within this. During our walkthrough with Dina and True, I think we identified three or four leaks that have not been addressed in the building, they're gonna start to grow. So I think it's a continuous problem. Yeah, let me know if you have any questions or any thoughts of what's going on here.
But do we deal directly with Jacob on this, or does he send somebody up? Like, Dick told me while I worked at the very state, I know, what did he do for you? He taught, he taught the class I used to teach.
So you have a reference on him?
Yeah, I can be direct.
Okay.
No, I've heard really good things about what is going on, it's true.
Good, so Jacob is one of, is the founder, right, one of the owners? Alex Holtermann will be the main point of contest, Alex lives in Washington, so he'll be coming over to be in our main point of contact.
I know that name.
I think so, I think he struck down, he was down in Springfield with Jacob, and he's originally from Washington, he just moved back to Washington to kinda spread their company out a little bit. But Jacob will be the tractor, doing the main design, Alex will be the PM on site.
I'm just curious, and somehow I didn't catch this document, so I apologize, and it probably says it in there, but what was the cost difference between the three bids?
I mean, I trust that you're not allowed to give prices for them, it's a professional services selection and RFQ qualifications. So same thing, selecting an engineer, architect, anything professional service, the state won't let you get pricing, because you have to make a selection based on qualifications and then negotiate with your selection. So we've only got one price, but it's not, they don't just hand you a price and you accept it, you have to verify, just go make sure we're comfortable with what we've done here.
Okay. So you just need us to approve, using true, is that what?
Yeah, yeah.
Just the portion of, who, contract, true.
Yeah, like, I make a motion to approve the contract.
Wait, second, second, Cory? You have the inspection and any other questions?
He probably hasn't given you full part, pricing is the way he thinks the.
Now, we need to start to kind of think of those, how much of the finishes were at this disturbance of that. Yeah, that's gonna be our big, but that's part of our first step. The goal, schedule, the timeline is of six weeks for them to finish our research and develop plans. And they get prepped and ready for a big package sometime late February, early March. Right now, that's all the farthest my contract takes, all my services go, at that point, we need to bid it out for probably two, three weeks. And then give contractors at least five weeks or so to get interior prep and ready. It's the day school ends here, there needs to be somebody taking ceiling tile up, start the process, it's gonna be tight, it's done, so.
Any chance there'll be a contractual lawsuit at some point, if you kept on pushing for that, that company's no longer in business overall, or they left the US.
Their own business overseas.
I have a motion in a second. No other questions? Vote, all favor of our charge, right in.
Thank you. Oh, we don't really have it on the agenda, but just, you guys wanna put an update on your roof? The punch list was generated the last time they walked through, we're waiting on materials to deliver, there's gonna be there today or tomorrow, I don't know if they showed up today to finish it. We have the manufacturer scheduled, I think, for Monday to come back and do a final walkthrough of the warranty. So at this point, we're substantially complete, we're just waiting for that last bit of punch list for, come Monday, we should put sample approval, you know. No, we're on cost, no. Thank you.
Please, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is I have a request for retirement from Superintendent Dean Smith. Approval from board.
Make a motion to approve Venus' miss.
Hi, do I have a second? All favor, raise your right hand. Zero, motion carries. Okay, with Dean retiring, we find ourselves in a position of having to hire a superintendent for the next school year. In the past, when Dr. Poisoner left, we hired the mayor superintendent search program, and I'm recommending that we hire him again. So I'd like to introduce Paul, Dr. Paul Richter, who is mayor of, doesn't, mayor of superintendent search.
Do this a little differently, normally, normally we sit down and talk about looking into your agenda, that kind of thing. I'm going to hit the, hit the high points, answer any questions you have, and cover the main things like what, what's gonna happen. It's a five-step process, what, if employed, what, what we would do, what I would do, and what's your responsibility. And then at the end of this, I'll make it as quick as I can, but it's so important, I don't wanna skip over anything, but at the end, the board, this will be your search. You'll have to be making some decisions before we get started, for example, we'll have to talk about timeline. We'll have, we'll have to talk about a salary range, and I'm gonna make a lot of recommendations and a lot of suggestions, and you can take them all or take none of them. But this will be your search, and those are the kinds of things that I need to know before we get out there, get it advertised, and start recruiting, and start doing the screening. So bear with me, I've been, the reason I'm up here is I'm gonna skip over, and I've got some booklets prepared for you. And like, having been superintendent for over twenty years, I know this, I give you the booklets, you're gonna read it from cover to cover, so I'm not gonna go through this thing and, and take time without giving you a broader sense of what's gonna, what's gonna happen. I was superintendent for Missouri School Service over twenty years, my last position was an elder down the road. And I would welcome the opportunity to, to assist this board, assist this district to locate good applicants, check the references, and screen the finalists with you to employ your next superintendent. And no matter what I say, and I'm gonna try to hurry, no matter what I say, or what we do to process, or how long it takes, remember, thought of life, this is your search. So if you're, you're gonna make, make the tough calls, I'm gonna take a lot of recommendations that have been successful on past searches I've done. Not to the channel of obvious numbers, I think, about twenty-five or thirty searches for, for mayor. And it's just what the name implies, Missouri Association of Rural Education, and I enjoy working with the rural and outstate schools. You folks have, I think, a more direct impact on the direction of, of your district than some of the urban areas that I have worked with. You folks are invisible in some of those, some of those urban areas, so anyway. What, this search process I'm gonna talk about in a minute, is that it has been producing both quality and a reasonable number. I can't stand up here and say, if you go with Mayor Paul Richter, you're gonna have X number of applicants, it doesn't work that way. The fewest I've ever had was five, and most I've ever had was twenty-six, but some places it's a piddle. And it depends on your location, which is great, your finances, you got forty percent, living great, lifestyle, do people wanna bring their family here, all kinds of things, so basically on reputation, and I don't think you have a problem with that, and your location, and depends on the salary. You're not, you know, you're gonna have a salary range that's competitive, and you need to establish that. And with the Christmas vacation, we may have to, or may recommend that you modify that over Christmas break. If the principal applies for the super tenancy, I need to talk to the superintendent. Schools are empty, I can't type them, if a superintendent out here at some smaller schools, hey, I wanna go to OC, and put my application in, I gotta talk to a board member or board members, sometimes I can't find them either over Christmas break, so keep that in mind, if you will. If in fact, have mayor do this in the timeline. December, Christmas break, most schools are out the next two weeks, I don't know when you're out, but the next couple of weeks, most of these school buildings are empty, and. And uh, I'm not gonna bring anybody to you for consideration unless I've had enough time to really check them out. And I feel comfortable doing that. So every district has some unique characteristic. I'm not sure this one has one too. And before I leave, I'll leave you a little full question deal, but I want you to do individually, not as a board. And that's gonna form hopefully a profile. So when I get on the phone and start asking reference questions, doing these things, I can speak to the kinds of things that you're looking for. And the kinds of things that you want in the first that you talk to down the road. I am, I am skipping for the sake of time. Interrupt me anytime and ask any question. If I don't have the answer, which is relevant to you. I'll get it. Anyway, I put these together. I put those together and seriously, I was trying to make light of it, read that. And all the steps are in there and I'm gonna hit my own highlight file and, and read what needs to be done. If you see something in there that's questionable, ask me if I can justify that certainly will. Let me go to the five phases of this search. Here's what's gonna happen. And I'm gonna have you summon back and forth. That's why I'm up here. So I'm gonna drop everything. We're not gonna take it face for face, of course. So we're gonna talk about the advertising, honey, do that, the recruiting, the screening, the employment, the follow-up. The kind of support you're gonna get. The person that you, that you hire. You're gonna get a broad recruiting effort. We're gonna have mailings. We're gonna have things uh, on the websites. And I saw your website. Yeah, I really liked that picture that you have. Is that a grown picture? Yeah. That's really, that's, that's good. That's very good. I liked that. So yesterday I was trying. Look, look at your information, whether it's a great picture, very fresh. Okay. Let's go to. Let's go to uh, wanna make that, let's go to page. Let's go to page four, start there. Okay. Now, first thing that we need to do is design a vacancy notice. And that vacancy notice will go everywhere. It goes on a lot of websites. It's mailed out and so forth. That's the first indication of the vacancy here at your school. So that's, that's the thing that starts this search. So with the type. We can put that on if we hurry. We can put that on before the Christmas break because it's gonna be on computers everywhere. Now, as far as the mailings, I, I would suggest to you that we, we mail those out too. We'll probably hold on that a little bit. So if we go to school and set in a mailbox in place, a few weeks and nobody reaches it. So, but the thing we need to do, and I don't know what kind of hurry you're in, but December and January are prime times. You're in good shape, in my opinion, to look at the good pool. A lot of things happen in January. Contractors are considered, people are looking for jobs, things of that nature. Sometimes you go with one five thousand dollar raise, you get five hundred. And you see, I think a good year for me to move. Uh, my kids just graduated high school. What I'd like to make a change. So this January should be good. And you should get a good pool of basketball candidates. All right. Let's, let's look at the vacancy notice. Now, this is why I'm up here and not dropping everything. Look, look at page nineteen, which is the page after. Page that has a big blackboard on it. Page nineteen. All right. Do you see, and we just did that. I don't know how it's called. You were Smith or, or whatever, but that may have something to be tweaked, just try to get it in there as accurately as you could. That's the vacancy notice that we're talking about. And you'll see that all the information is first introduction to your district. Down below, after all the boxes and so forth, here's the stuff that you need to fill with the blanks. Applications must be received by date. Screening, you have to establish a screening meeting to come back. And I will present all the applicants to you. I'm not gonna come back and say these two or these four. You're gonna see them all. Usually I put them in three groups. Group one, great references, great experiences, didn't find any baggage, things of that nature. You've got the experience you're looking for. Group two. Maybe crackerjack principal, really good, good person. He or she has done everything, but they haven't been responsible for district budget. So they're group two. Some boards will say, hey, they got all the earmarks and all the characteristics. They can go learn that stuff. That's, that's fine. And then we put them in group three. In this old world, there's always a group three. Those folks may be not been successful in other places or have some kind of baggage or the kind of thing that you really would rather not bring to the district. Well, that's the first thing we need to do. And, and then I, I don't know what you plan on doing. Are you trying to, to make those decisions tonight?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the only thing we really, I think, are rushing, rushing with it. Okay. All right. Question. Okay. Last year, we were looking, you know, there's about sixty to seventy-five districts that changed super tits. That makes you feel a bit better, different, but we looked up to see how it was. And uh, most, most people uh, were applying for certain jobs and were successful. That goes then to the recruitment. The recruitment, let's go back to. This is kind of cluttered here. I thought maybe skipping around would be plain, but it's not. Okay, let's go, let's go here. And I'm gonna ask the board to identify the strengths and challenges in your district. I'm gonna ask the board to tell me what your required criteria is and what's desired. For example, I was required probably as a person to have super potential to. Right? Sired maybe that person's been in central office situation. These are kind of the things that will shake. Compensation package, I told you about that. I recommend range. Because if you get somebody that maybe is new to the position and so forth, that gives the board a little latitude to say, well, I'm making this up. Ninety to a hundred and ten. Okay, you have been super, over a ninety-two-five. This other person comes in and they've done a whale of a job and they've been a school district, some places in Missouri. Have glowing recommendations. You may say, okay, you're one-two-five, something that at least feeds you some discretion. Okay. All right. Let's look there at page. Let's look at page. Seven and eight. Once we get this vacancy notice done, page seven and eight, those are all the places that would be displayed, if you will. On the mayor website, social media, e-blast, about every week or ten days, we'd put something out there, hey. The decision, it'll say is open and don't forget the, the deadline is next Tuesday. Let's do that. That website administrators look at. Regional places. Where, where do you go to your superintendent? Well, yeah. We have those throughout the state every month. We always have a mayor representative. We'll have somebody there to stand up. Give a little news clip and also say, hey, here's the vacancy we have. We already invited you guys, you know, to get your application in. Once I put my name on this, I'll get people a lot, a lot of phone calls and they'll be asking me if I'm here with them. Yeah. In fact, I've been there two, three times. An old district a little bit, you know, some people saw districts. Then uh, put it on your local website. Now, number nine says flyer distribution. That's what I'm talking about. We'll mail the vacancy notice to about four, four hundred and seventy-five school districts, super tenants. And we've told them over the past, if you're not interested in moving, give us a lot of your principles or your systems, or something that, that, that way. We also, some, some districts say, go ahead. We send it to the comparable organization in Kansas, Iowa, and Illinois. We sent it to the Missouri Elementary Principal Association. We sent it to the Missouri Secondary Principal Association. Point being that, beat that to death. This notice is the first thing that lets people know there's vacancy. It's very important. That you plug in the things that you want to have done. Back here, recruitment, screening. Here's where, here's where the rubber really reached the road. This takes a long time. Needs to take a long time. That would be done technically with you guys and ladies at a screening meeting. And what you need to do is, once you set the deadline for applications, look at the next Tuesday, Wednesday, and schedule a screening meeting. And I will come back and that's when we'll go through and a closed meeting and try to take while we discuss this to folks. Select who you want to interview. And so that will be sometime in January, probably. All right. I'll receive and compile all the applications. I'll conduct all the reference checks where possible. I usually call more, I'm supposed to write as many unlisted references. I do listed references. I'll need to know how their district is doing, how their kids are doing. And uh, a lot of times I'll know the neighboring superintendent, the neighboring person who knows what's happening next door. So really try to uh, look at that in great detail. Analyze the application material. I know this is like application one-on-one, but you can't believe sometimes the kinds of applications that I get. They'll run transcripts, you have copy machines, white piece of paper, but it's in there. And so my thinking is, you know, if that's the way they're gonna present themselves to this board, is that's the way they do their job. Who knows? So there's a lot of things to look at as we go through there. If we get close to the end, the ones who seem to be moving to the top, I will call again personally. And I'm gonna be asking a question to them. What's the reason that you're moving? What's your contract status for next year? I wanna call one or more of your board members and put that information will be jod down and shared with you at the end. All right, selection. You will see all the applications. Become your property. When I leave here after the screening meeting, after you made your decision, I'll leave you all the application and all the stuff that I have. I'll leave it with you. You can look at that before you get into the interview process. Might spend more time doing the protocol and steps to make up what the interview will be. I will say that after, the week after the screening meeting, if you go to Pennsylvania as soon as you can, a couple of evenings for interview. I don't know how many from the interview, but that usually takes care of it. So you have the deadline, your screening meeting, the next week, you have the interviews. I'll take care of the interviews. I'll call these people. I'll see them for you. All you gotta do is show up and be a board of education and make a selection. Sometimes the tough of that is there is you have good applicants. I had five, six people one time. And I said, you know, almost apologized. So I had fifteen and twenty. I said, I've got four people, guys said, four presidents. I really had four good ones, twenty bad ones. And I think since that, that made, that made sense of looking at people who can come in and work with you guys. Work with staff, work with kids, blend into your community. And part of your community, which I think is an important part of this job. Okay, let me skip all this other stuff. Let's talk about costs. You guys are, are the stewards of your finances. And we, we don't do this as a source of revenue. Do this as a service to our members and our goal is to break even. And usually we go close, as we do, but uh, for size student, school that you have is forty-four thousand. And it's, that's all inclusive. Uh, there's no postage, there's no secretarial, there's no mileage, no nothing. You hire a superintendent, your contract signed, but send you a statement. You send them a check, case closed. So that's, that's, that's what the cost would be. Questions on that? Actually, it's pretty competitive when you look at some of the other agencies that do, but uh, just because it's less money, doesn't mean there's any less quality there. I, I certainly haven't been bad. All right. And let's go to. You see, what is it doing? All right, page fifteen and sixteen, those are the searches that we've done the last three years. You know, some of those people, my name's on there, the street, four guys, dude, statewide. I've been very good to keep your art, whatever, we're, I saw some seats, towns, districts, so they're there, they exist, but they do, they do well. So anyway, there, look at those. President, you know, if you know somebody on there, you wanna call somebody, that's great to go ahead and look around here. On page seventeen. Board, two board presidents make some comments about what kind of experience they have when they complete their search. I'm not gonna belabor the rest of the stuff because it's in there. It's in detail. What question do you have? Saw your agenda. Well, trying to hurt this. That's all your agenda. And it's got leaks in the roof. You got this, you got all that stuff going on, but this is very important. Happy to come back and work with you guys. And any questions, comments?
There are a lot of searches going on right now. And so I'm guessing your recommendation is to get this on the streets as fast as possible.
Yeah, and with, with the Christmas break. What I'm saying to you, and, and you know, again, this is your search. You see, and I went on to it, I'll do something else. That's fine. But with the Christmas break, what I'd probably do is, is I would quickly, I would get the vacancy notice completed. And I'd get it out to, those things that sit there all over the Christmas break. And people say, hey, you know, I got some time now. I'm not going to work today. I can make an application. I would, I would do that. I would say that we can come back and even though that's out there for a couple of weeks, that's great. What people have done in the past is, you have four weeks to make an application. First week, not much happened. Second week, not much happened. Third week, you start getting more and more calls, more and more to the ball, kind of thing. So my thinking is, I was fooling with the timeline. You know, if you would, if you would uh, I checked, I just made a copy of my little calendar. Anyway, is that, I would say, if I could get that information from you, I, I can get this thing printed and on the webs everywhere by the end of the week. By the end of the week, today's like fourteen, I get it out there about like thirteen this week. Then I, I would fool with it. I would just leave months of. I'd leave it month of January to fly. That's too long for you. Cut it down. But you're not gonna gain or lose anything, but if you, month of January and like the twenty-eighth, I was fooled this today. Like the twenty-eighth of January, say, okay, that's it. Absolutely dead by twenty-eight. And I'd go back to following Wednesday, which is the second of February and have our big meeting. And that'll be good. And in the following week, you could interview a couple nights. And then following week, you could interview a couple nights. And that's, that puts you, that puts you in the seventh to the eleventh of February.
Looks like a lot of our competition has closing dates on just about January twentieth. Is that, is that week going to cost us a good candidate or not?
No, it, it is going to cost us candidates. In many cases, you know, the location, the salary, the reputation kind of thing. Uh, yeah, sometimes I get, one of my buddies will say, yeah, I got all records applications, that's what I do too. That doesn't really happen that often. And I, there were three searches going on, I just finished Stanberry up by Maryville. There was no duplications, they had several good candidates hired. But I would say, if you come in there, don't cut yourself too short, because you know what I know. I heard, heard it coming back there. Around the holidays, my goodness, we got bad concerts, we got this, we got this going, so you're not going to waste anything. I would say if you just shut her down, uh, last Friday, last Friday of January, and have me come back following Wednesday. Interview the following week, you're going to be done the first week of February. That's not too late. Short, but that's fine, I don't think you gain anything by short.
Even though, so I think two of those schools were in the central districts, similar sized schools, and I think you represent both of them. We're not gonna, we're, we're, we're not going to be competing with them, or we're not going to lose one of them to one of those districts, as long as.
I can't say that.
That was the only thing that made me a little nervous when I looked at your website that I saw.
Yeah.
We've got some competition.
And, and I think, you know, with the craziness in our society and COVID and shootings and whatever, I think you're going to see a lot of folks abandon school superintendent positions, and there'll be people out there. Any questions or comments, guys, I've kept this way down.
So for a, a position announcement, it looked to me like your provision announcements are pretty much boilerplate, they look very similar to us. Meaning, I don't know what we want to talk about. The only thing I saw that I'd added to this was a preference to live in one of the district communities. And that was really the only thing I saw, that I saw on some other position announcements, I didn't see on this one.
Some, some districts, uh, that's, you know, I said a while ago, you know, what's recommended or what's required, kind of like, if this board feels strongly and you have some housing out there, and live in there, buy.
But as long as we just put it as a preference, then we don't have to use that as a criteria, but we could use it as a criteria.
Yeah, and you know, it's realistic, something, you know, like I said, my, my kids at C N are going to graduate, I don't know the amount of way that might work for you, kind of, so. Yeah, I, I use the word preferred, and, and, and that way, if everything's equal, that might be a determinator of just a couple of people. So, any other comments, questions?
There's no further questions I need.
Has Mayor done one of these for this whole district before? How long have we been members?
Golly, I don't know.
We didn't, whenever Dennis and I were here.
Yeah. It was somebody eight years, the members of Mayor, Mayor did a search when Dr. Poiseau left.
Yeah, so when D A hired Lenis.
And the candidate that we hired was Lenis Bassam. True, he'd be a good candidate. Way back in the day, when it was a little more turmoilish, uh, we hired the other man. I was. Name of the pitch again. Did you, I forget, so, who was that, that lady? Barry Olson, too, before.
Nancy Westby.
Nancy Westby. I have Carol Wood, she was on board back then. Nancy Westby. And I think the lady, dude, jokingly say it was in the Little House next to.
Yeah, we used them.
That was.
Olson's, uh, he doesn't. Well, when I, when I was on the board, we used them, and they did a pretty good job. We had a meeting, they brought us all the applicants, talked about it, and we got to choose based on the applications, who we wanted to interview, and all that stuff. Took a lot of legwork out of our job.
And I'm not saying y'all mostly.
As far as like our staff trying to find, get it out there.
I would, do boards typically have members due state to mayor or MSBA? Or did we used to have both, or has it been mayor for a long time?
It's been mayor for about eight years. We went, went to mayor one because they were a lot more cost-effective. It was during the, uh, when the school did budget cuts. And when they eliminated junior high athletics, at the same time they went to mayor, the membership was considerably more cost-effective than state, state district, by some sort of search.
I was going to say, do you know what the cost difference is that you want to do? Almost a two thousand dollars difference.
They, I don't say this, you know, in great fashion, but we do have the content, the, the context with, you know, folks, D S E, and, and, you know, the superintendent, this kind of thing. And, uh, it all goes together, I mentioned this joint, it all goes together. You tell me, and you will, what you're looking for, and I find those characteristics. Then when I call these people, whatever, I can ask those kinds of questions. For example, let's say one thing is, we want somebody who'll be involved in the community, uh, who'll be visible and so forth. When I call these people, I'll say, you know, what about their visibility? Do they belong to any, uh, club, you know, they show, well, those kinds of things is, is gives me a stream of information to get back to you. Okay.
Are we going to do this in closed session, or?
We got to do details in closed session, but I need a motion to hire Mayor to do super different search. I'm going to hire Mayor to do our search. Mark, do I have a second?
My second.
Second, bye. Any other discussion?
Like I said, we, when last time we used them, they did a good job of presenting what we wanted and they gave us, they did a good job of doing background checks on everybody and stuff, so. I think it was, I think it was.
It was.
I remember that meeting.
Yeah. I got you. Anyway, do me one favor.
We have a motion and a second. All favor, raise your right hand. Post. Six, four, one of those.
What I'd like for you to do is, don't put your name on this. Don't do it as a board, don't share it with each other. Take this home or do whatever you want with it. Answer those four questions. Sure, answer it the way you feel. What happens is, get them to the little lady on the end there. And she's, she's only been here a week or two, so she'll know what to do with them. Anyways. Now, do those, just, just, just do bullets. And, and give them to you way in the, you know, Christmas here, as soon as you can. Put them in the brown envelope, sign them, and send them to me. I'll take these and summarize them and send the board president back a summary, and you'll see what your feelings are on those. These hopefully get transferred into some kinds of things that I can investigate when I check these people's references. Okay? Please do that, this was very helpful. Thank you, Paul. Okay, I'll get out of here. Okay, I'm going to go ahead with it. Thank you. Thank you.
How quickly do you want these back?
When you wake up? Yeah, as soon as you get them down, as soon as you get them down. You're not going to be around a lot, it's confusing.
Friday, since he wants to.
Yeah. Well, he's not always going to do the short position announcement. I mean, this is just for your conversations with candidates, right?
Yeah, I, I need these, you know, as soon as you can, but it's not going to roll away in the back. Vacancy notice is, is the key issue. And we want to get that out before Christmas break. Please relax and enjoy Christmas.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Get moving on item seven point four. Hold to the program report.
Hey, for those who may not know, my name is Shannon Wolf, and I'm a middle school counselor. Um, the elementary counselor was not able to be here tonight. Um, so our counseling program has four main components, curriculum, individual planning, responsible services, and support. And I spend most of my time on individual planning, so I'm individually with kids. A lot of seniors with anybody for college and parents after high school. That kind of takes the bulk of my time. Uh, but I know the elementary counselor spends also her time in curriculums. I know that she does classroom lessons with each class, I think every other week. You guys can kind of glance through everything, I'm not going to read all this stuff. So new this year, uh, the elementary counselor has a new curriculum that was purchased by the OCACAP. And she gets to go for training, uh, in February on that curriculum. One thing that we both really enjoyed this year is that new contract about the IQ testing. So that frees up a lot of our time. I know we didn't get that started right at the beginning of the year. Something like that first month of school, I'd already done five IQ tests. I'm sorry, I'm pretty involved, it takes me, by the time I do the test and write the reports and that kind of stuff, it's about a half day's work. So it's really nice to have that extra time. Also new this year is that we offered the Algebra One E O C in the fall. Um, and this was for kids who took Algebra One, um, when we got for COVID. And so they didn't get to take the Algebra One E O C. We also went ahead and opened this up for kids who took the Algebra One E O C but did not score advanced or proficient. And we thought this was a good idea because while the state of Missouri exempted those students from the Algebra One E O C, the A plus program did not. So Department of Parent Education and More Course Development, uh, still requiring a math requirement for the A plus program. And so we wanted to give an opportunity for those kids to meet that requirement through the E O C. If students don't meet the requirement for the E O C, then they have to meet it through the ACT math section. Sometimes that's math test. But the ACT test is pretty overwhelming for some kids, it's really long. So we just wanted to give the kids as much opportunity as possible to earn that scholarship. As we kind of mentioned before, we, Ms. Everett and I have worked kind of a bit with the City Police Department. And they did the shopping the year, a bit this year for the first time. Um, and then they were also, had donated six flags tickets. So we kind of coordinated with teachers and families and the police department to figure out, uh, who we can kind of give those to. We also had a three thousand dollar donation by a community member for gifts for our students. So Joyce and I went shopping, and for her kids, who split in fifteen hundred each, uh, for her kids, we got like Legos and Hot Wheels and all kinds of really cool things. Um, and for my kids, we got fifty dollar Visa gift cards. So we planned to send some of those on our Facebook page. And I just then did a little spin the wheel, held our kids' names in it, um, and selected three or four each day. And it's really been a, a good thing, and our kids are excited about it, they're asking, how have I been, how have I been? But you just gotta be lucky. That's been exciting, and we've also made a stipulation, they have to be there that day. So if their name gets drawn and they're not there, then, you know, they're going to kind of just go back in the drawing. So it hopefully is kind of helping with our attendance a little bit there. It's naturally cool, lots of generous people in our community. Improvements, Joyce and I work all together, we communicate well, working with DFS and our school therapist. We were able to attend the school council conference this year, and then we had it last year due to COVID. So that's always a good thing to connect with counselors in Missouri. Uh, and then one thing that we had done in the past, but haven't done in the past couple of years because of COVID, and we didn't test and things, was have an incentive day where kids who scored advanced or proficient on the math test or the E O C. I got a fun day, so I took my kids, um, to state tech, and they utilized the activity center. They have to be the arcade games and play on the courts. We all, we provided lunch, like pizza and snacks and stuff for them. My kids just really appreciated that. And they noticed that during state tech spring breaks, we were interfering with students that were on campus. And I think Joyce took hers to incentive me. Anyways, the P T O kind of funded that for us, but since things have shifted with P T O, they're not really able to give us that money anymore. So it's something that we'd like to do to reward our kids.
Thank you, Jen.
Currently, um, we serve seventy-two students in grades A through twelve, which accounts for about twelve percent of our total student enrollment in special education. We do have six additional students in early childhood special ed program, and that's Ms. Bowers' ring. Forty-seven of our students that are in special ed are at the elementary, ten in middle school, fifteen at the high school. We then have an additional eighteen students who have Bible four plans. Uh, we have one student that attends Missouri School for the Spreely Disabled, and one that attends Missouri School for the Blind. And we have eight students that we serve, um, who attend at St. George. One of the things this year, um, that Shannon mentioned that we've done is we contracted out our IQ testing, which it couldn't have happened in a better year. We've had seventeen initial evaluations and thirty, thirteen reevaluations this year for a total of thirty evaluations, which is more than double what we had at this point last year. So for Shannon and Joyce to have kept up with all of those IQ tests would have been just almost impossible. So we currently are conducting eleven evaluations as initial evaluations on students. And so, um, you know, we'll see what happens after Christmas, if we get additional ones or not, but that's where we are at this point. We are also this year up for a D S E special education review. So we will have to have our first submission for that uploaded in February. So our two Mondays that the teachers work for P V in January, January third in the afternoon, and then all day on January twenty-fourth, we will be working on getting that information ready to upload, because it's, it's an undertaking. So a couple of things we're looking at, we need to continue to update our testing materials, and we do that every year. Um, our elementary teachers in particular really want to make sure that they're getting on board with the phonics instructions so that we are mirroring what they're doing in the regular classroom. And then one of the things that we've also realized is that we just have a need to have additional training for teachers on autism. It's, it's a great area of need, and it's something that we are continuing to work towards becoming more proficient at. Recently, we sent one teacher and one aide to another school to look at their program, see how it worked, see how we could maybe adapt our program to work, and we're in the process of making some changes there as well.
I have a few. So the seventeen and thirteen, that's in addition to, there's eleven more as well? Or is that eleven part of the thirteen?
That eleven is part of the seventeen.
Okay. And how long does that usually take? What's the typical term?
So when a student is referred, you have thirty days to determine whether or not they, whether or not you need to test. Once you have made that determination and you get permission to test, you then have sixty days to complete the testing. So overall, it's approximately a ninety-day process.
And then, so, does speech, speech therapy, does that fall under this as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent, seven point six, who's the track project?
And you're back at you have a proposal from the Potters and Associates, and it has quite a few things on it. Uh, Mr. Jakes, Mr. Garrett and I met to talk about where we want to go with the track at this particular moment. Um, and our recommendation at this moment is to do the track patching option. And then at the last athletic booster club meeting, they voted to pay for the resurfacing of the runways that has to be done when the runways are moved. But we have an area, uh, one area in particular, that really needs some patching in order to make the track usable for track needs. My understanding is that this would buy us a couple of years and then put us in a better position to do a full track project at that time. Why then, the football field should be. Why then the football field should be kind of lined out so we would know what's happening there. And then of course financially put us in a better position at that time as well. So our recommendation is to complete the track patching project. And option one, and again, the runways would also be resurfaced, but the Booster Club is paying for that, correct?
They're paying for the 24 nights.
The Booster Club is paying 19,000, wouldn't it be?
No, they're paying for the resurfacing as well of track. They're paying for option one. Option two, complete where it's 24 nights, 75.
Option two says it's track patching and.
That's what they're paying.
So then we wouldn't be.
They're paying, we're not paying for anything.
So they're going to pay the full 20,000?
They're going to pay 25,000. Yep. They approved to pay the full thing for 24,000, 975.
But the stipulation that the javelin often gets resurfaced, so that correct is probably not correct. That javelin was not in there. We're the only place, only track to my knowledge. They're either grass or they're the same surface as the track. We have cement. So when kids come, they go up there and then they'll change their shoes because they don't have the right shoes for cement. So we did throw that in, or there will be some cost. I think we put to not exceed 25,000 dollars.
So whatever the extra is, what would you want the school to cover? If it's over 45, which I'm assuming.
Which I'm assuming it would be.
Yeah.
When is the next track season?
Starting.
Start February. You start practice January 20th and then I think the first event in March first.
So waiting to see what we dance out on ESSR and everything else. There's not enough time between now and, well, that'd be March, April. I mean, we couldn't have them coming. If we had to redo the track, I guess then you'd want it somewhere between July 1 and when class started in the fall. But you've got another track season that you want to get through. So that's really not an option for us to wait till July.
Right. If we wanted to get on somebody's calendar this summer, it has to happen.
Yeah, because I mean, it just, there, it's that one corner that's just not, it's not safe. That's what needs to be patched. So to get that patched and then that would give us at least a year, probably two years is what he thought that we could get. And then resurface everything. Yeah. It's just that one corner up there by the press box that is just, that's potentially patching. It's pretty messed up.
Is there any chance that we can use ESSR money on this?
Well, the way that I have it projected at this point is that, yes. Well, I mean, the ESSR money wouldn't be used on the track, but you know what I mean? Offsetting some money to us. And that I had in the proposed budget that I'm working on for next year. So that is possible for next year. It's just, wait. I can say if we wait, we can't, we can't have any track needs on it this year the way it is. So if we wait to do it until after July 1st, we just do it knowing we can't have track needs on it this year. And like I said, we would have to get on somebody's calendar to redo it this summer now. And once they do it, you're off of it for, gosh, four to six weeks. When the football starts.
Is this repair something that can be done?
They can do it.
Okay, that's what.
Then he can come in anytime to repair it, but say, because he's in the area so he can get it done. I mean, not theoretically, but he can get it done before the season starts is what it said. It'd be a quick, one-day deal to fix it.
This would allow us to at least post something this year. Probably not at the state districts, but. Okay.
We could get all the runways up. I mean, he's going to do that job with it, so.
Are the runways in?
Yeah. I mean, there, there, we did get a bid that upgraded, pay all 3,000 for the concrete work. We're waiting for them to finish the project and then we'll start on it. So hoping.
They're going to be done with the track reason?
Yes. It is. We hope. It was, yeah. I shouldn't say, not guaranteed, but expectation is that yes, it's going to be done here shortly.
Can I ask who's going to do it?
I don't know. It's whoever, student, like bank. Concrete work there.
It could easily be. Yeah. I mean, they do a good job of that's what's going on.
Yeah. They're just trying to that.
Okay. So I'm not hearing we have good options. So sounds like we need to approve anything to exceed 24,000 or not. It's just certain.
No, we need to approve anything to exceed the $25,000.
I move that we approve McConnell Associates to repair, patch, or to track, to patch the track and. Like the runways. Anything to exceed 25,000 dollars.
The javelin.
Including the javelin.
Any other questions? On February 3rd and. 7-0 motion carries.
Either you're in contact about the javelin then tomorrow.
Yep. I'll send them an email and get that application.
The javelin, are they going to put the half inch overlay? Is that the plan? So we don't have to. They do the half inch polyurethane base mat?
Yeah, that's what we're going to have.
That way later on, when we do the full structural spray, they can put that like over the top of it.
Correct. 7.7 for 13 of both policies, 13 25.
So you have that in a packet with the proposed changes to policy?
I noticed, I made the comment, could we put or equivalent or something like that in case somebody has some other. Better way, whatever, some other acceptable background check that we, it's written, which is a problem we have now. It says you can only use the one, right?
By federal security.
Some, yeah, something else. And it is, and if you look at the third attachment, that's where it is. Look at new there.
New when it's just this markup one without them.
Okay.
These volunteers will need to register with the Family Care Safety Registry and obtain a background check. I was in favor of saying, I think I mentioned, register with the Family Care Safety Registry and obtain a background check or equivalent or something like that. So five years down the road, something else.
It might come up something, something better or more streamlined.
Well, just like what we're using now, it's something different. So are you saying, the way I read it, whatever we're using now, you couldn't, for this policy, couldn't use it anymore? What do we use it now?
The annual one, that's what we were trying to get away from was the annual one where they have to pay the 14 whatever per year.
That, the one we're trying to get away from is the one that's 60 some dollars.
Right. Well, no, that one's still in there for the screen volunteers. That's the one we said was going to remain for the screen volunteers, the one that's 41. 75, the one that they have to do their fingerprint. The one through the Missouri State Highway Control. And if, yeah. That's the way I understood it last month, was that that was the one that was going to stay the same for screen volunteers who go on trips and overnight trips and field trips and that kind of thing. And then those that are just coming in for parties or things like that, we're going to do the Family Care Safety Registry one. It's just $14 one time and then they can access a new one whenever they want to.
So the Family Care Safety Registry, they do or don't do a background check as part of what they do?
They do a background check. It's just not a fingerprint background check. And so what they say is they cannot guarantee the results of that because it's not fingerprint background check. And the one under screen volunteer, excuse me, volunteers is the one that did the fingerprint background check. Missouri State Highway Control FBI.
So then is that redundant? The Family Care Safety Registry and obtain a background check? That looks redundant.
I get you to obtain a background check. Yeah.
So do they, do they give the district the background check or the evidence of the Family Care Safety Registry?
To this point, could we say that they will register with the Family Care Safety Registry or a similar provider to obtain a background check? That way we're not locked into one provider forever if we want to change to a different provider as long as it's a similar type of a background check. But I think it would give room to the administration to decide, does this make sense? Is this equivalent to give more latitude? If, you know, if somebody has a background check that's through another provider, I don't want administration to feel like they're locked in forever. It can't use common sense.
So then something like these volunteers will need to register with Family Care Safety Registry or equivalent provider? To obtain a background check and then a copy of the background check must be provided to the district at least one time per year.
I move that we approve the amended policy 14 25.
It's just.
First, I'll do it. So we approve first rate. No, nothing.
First, second readings are. First, the second reading, huge opportunities to make changes. The approval comes on after the third reading.
So just for clarification, then. Do you provide the background check or the family, whatever?
You get a background check from the Family Care Safety Registry.
So they give you a background check?
Yeah.
And you provide a copy.
We can't go in and get it. They have to go in and get it and give us a copy.
The family people sent it to you?
No.
No. So if you go get the background, you get a copy of it and take it to the school and show it to them. We can't get it from the school.
But it's one time fee. They pay it one time and then they can go in and request their check. Multiple times, right?
It's cheaper.
Instead of each year paying 14 dollars to the.
Okay, moving on to item 7.8, transportation discussion. This was put on the agenda for two reasons. One, it was requested by a board member and two, Samantha Braken asked that the school bus stop at her daycare where your old school used to be. Okay, to start with, bus stops that were currently used were by the board on August 17, 2021. Bus stops on Highway 50, Main Street provide safety to the kids because the act is, when they stop and put their lights on, that allows the kids from the other side of the road to safely cross, avoid having to try to dash traffic. Now, all the bus over there by Klepper has, it weighed on the north side of the road. They don't cross until the buses stop, stop traffic. So provide the safe crossing for, for the students as opposed to the students trying to get over to the old school.
It's the bus stop, but it stops at the courthouse. One stops at the courthouse.
Yeah.
And then in front of St. George. And St. John's. St. John's and they're about to come up the city, like it's a city hall. I'm just, I'm just trying to think where I see piles of kids.
Yeah. I know a couple of years ago, the bus used to stop at one of my kids' daycares and drop kids off. Did they stop dropping kids off at daycares or was there a change that took place?
It's a new daycare that's been.
But does the bus still stop at previous daycares that were in existence before?
We don't go door to door to any daycare and have it.
They used to drop kids off at the Little Bridge's daycare when my kids went there.
Because they went down.
Because they were down there.
Because they went down there.
But like we have a couple now that they drop off on the county road and they have to walk down to the daycare door. When I talked to Joe, I don't know, a month ago about it, we don't go door to door.
And the other thing is, if we decide to move the bus stop over where your old school is, then we have to. If the kids will be dashed across a part of the traffic trying to get over there because there will be nothing to stop, stop them. Plus, they're to do it. One thing is, in the pamphlet I handed you, it says that the town's city school bus stop should be established at least 68 blocks apart. So if you decide to change bus stop to where the old school was, you have to eliminate that close bus stop on Highway 50.
We don't have to. And I find it laughable that we were told that the street was too narrow. The school buses were in front of that little 17 years.
Yeah. So when the school bus, a lot of that building, you had to cross the yards, that stopped traffic, controlled directions so they could pull. And everyone around. There is a rule that bus stops can't be any closer than 500 feet.
And I don't have a problem with, I mean, if our rules, we don't pull off major road and we don't stop individual businesses. I mean, if that's our policy, fine. I think more trouble is that one. If there was any truth to what she was told, the excuses were leading up to, well, we just don't pull off. I mean, that's my, that is my big concern. If she was told the things that she said she was told, which were excuses, we should have told her right up front, we don't do that. That's the policy. We don't do that. Until it's said, she said, and it sounded plausible that, well, it's off private property. And then next time it was too narrow, it should have just been, we don't do that. And I think that's, I think that's where the, maybe some of the angst comes from.
And I think where her location is, yes, the bus could turn off there at the water tower and make the loop around the park to pick that one child up. But then you have all these other kids, multiple children, crossing the road where the bus stops in front of the pool, which by this point, I mean, I don't know that it would make sense for them to backtrack around for one child. I mean, I know every child is important, but you have more kids. You have more kids over here. I can see what that's. How like she could get that one child right up to the bus stop. That far.
I think the issue was, but there's only one provider there.
Right. She can't run to that child.
Bus can stop on the road, pick up and then pull it. Like, if you're talking about one or the other, get out of the right, right road. Stop on the highway, block traffic.
I'm sorry, sir, but you're not part of this discussion.
Yeah, but I still have a voice. I can talk to you. Or take me out the door, but I don't see a cop here shutting me out the door.
I mean, I didn't want to talk. They could do that, but it's backtracking.
Nobody's saying.
He wants to make, you'd be turning in here. You're gonna have to go all the way around the park and come up at the water tower.
And now, I guess with private properties, I mean, some of the other things, I think that's not a, oh, I think we just hang our hand, that's not a policy. If, if that's truly not solved. But I think it would be good in the future to look at who gets off at that stop because I think that there are a lot of kids that walk. If they walk back behind the park. That could be a long ways and there might be, there might be a simpler or better way to do that. That might be, that might be worth exploring next time.
Well, what'll happen in August of next year, you'll have to group bus runs again, so. I would say. June or July, you start looking at that. And seeing if there's any road change. That also may have an effect on what the bus company bid is. Seven point nine.
Can you, can you at least call her? And say, hey, we're gonna look into this, but we can't do anything this school year. Because I wanna, they're feeling like at least we're, take Megan to the, because I think we are, right, as a board? We are gonna look into it. But I would say that routes have been made, payments have been paid and that. If you don't mind calling her. At least explain to them, yeah, we're gonna look into the issue a little bit more. Because I, I don't think that discussion, the discussion is done with that. I think next year when the bus routes come out, if we want that.
Please save return. Inverse description.
One of the things that we're now required to do is review our plan every six months. And, or does need to now adopt the plan. One of the things in light of the whole county case that was recently decided on. Was we had to revise the plan and the. Administrative team and the two district nurses met last Thursday to talk about this and going forward. What are we going to do? So page five is where it talks about the exclusion from school. We do still have a board policy, board policy twenty-eight sixty, which is a municipal disease policy. That says that basically we can. It's actually based on state statute. So there's a state statute, I'll read it to you here. That says. So state statutes. One sixty-seven point one nine one says children with contagious diseases not to attend school. It is unlawful for any child to attend any of the public schools of this state. While afflicted with any contagious or infectious disease or while liable to transmit such disease after having been exposed to it. And then it goes on from there. And that's what board policy twenty-eight sixty was based on. So when we met last week, what the recommendation of the admin team and the district nurses. Was that we follow our board policy. That's also the recommendation from our school attorneys. That's also the recommendation from our insurance carrier. And basically, parents would have three options if their child was a close contact. They could choose to keep them home from school for ten days. They could do the test to stay option. And now there's another option where they could. Stay home for the first five days, test on day five, if they're negative on day five, they could return to school on day seven. So there's three different options there for kids and parents who are close contacts. We've had some in the last couple weeks. We've had quite a few who've chosen the test to stay option and we've had some who have chosen to just be excluded from school for the full ten days, so. Parents are given that option and then they are capable of making that decision. So that is our recommendation. That is what is in the plan at this point. Opening questions?
The test to say if school starts appealing?
Yes, the day that we're notified that somebody tests positive and we get their close contacts, we test them that day. And then we try to test them, so that's day one is what we call it. We try to test them on day three and day five. Sometimes it ends up being day four and day six or something like that. It just has to be three times within that first seven days. And as long as they test negative each of those times, they can stay in school. With a mask.
Yeah. Yeah.
We did, thank you, Tracy. If it's an in-home, so mom tests positive. And Suzie, you know, lives with mom, then that person is excluded from school for ten days. Because the likelihood that they're going to transmit or. Become positive is much greater when they're living in the same home. But like, if you go to a birthday party and Johnny tests positive, you can do test to stay. You're not living with him. You're not around in twenty-four seven. You're not in the same house, whatever. And then any close contacts at school, of course, unless they're siblings and they live in the same house, could do the test to stay option.
So someone's kid tests positive in class, everybody in the class can test his day, so.
Yes.
As I was saying.
Yes. And the parents have to sign to allow us to test them. Which so far hasn't been a problem. I wanna say we've done. I don't, thirty test to stays in the last week.
So I'm not hearing anything very controversial there. What's the, what's controversial about that?
The only thing controversial is when the Attorney General put out this statement. It made it sound as if schools cannot do anything. You can't mask, you can't test, you can't exclude.
Yeah, they're trying to say you can't have a mask.
You can't do anything. And that's not the case. We still have a board policy. There's still a state statute that we have to follow. The only thing the court case in Cole County said was that the health department cannot issue those mandates.
We can.
We can as a.
But if we don't want to, we don't have to anymore, eventually.
You don't. I will say one of the things that our insurance provider has told us is that that would. More likely than not. Take away our insurance coverage for an event if we were to get sued. Because they will cover you as long as you're not showing willful negligence. But if they're not following your board policy and state statute, you're probably gonna be found willfully negligent and insurance wouldn't cover that.
Have you had anybody? Has there been any complaints in the school about it? I mean, you tested thirty people.
Yeah. Immediate family, they had to stay home.
And people just don't like it. But I mean, it's not been.
I would say, but I'm saying like, you do the test option. And then your kid stays and has to wear a mask, right? Anybody upset about that?
I haven't heard any complaints.
What's the biggest complaint you're getting?
The biggest complaint is immediate family.
Immediate family.
Because they can't test to stay. That's the biggest complaint. That's what I've got.
But if it was. That's.
It's kind of scary.
It's weird everywhere.
That's what, that's what.
And then.
But the big thing is, with the Attorney General, it's like the statement was.
Right.
It, it, if people don't have proportion, you know, these people are, they don't understand and say you can't do that. Yes, we can. Here's our policy. We can still say that, so.
There's just a lot of misperception about what that.
What about elementary problems?
Where? Yeah.
Everybody's.
It's been at high school.
The high school bus.
It's been. Well, and it's basically this past, because this week we're doing finals and now they're not there. Do finals and now they have to come back and do finals, January third or January fourth. So it's a big issue because we can't, we don't do finals. In the classroom, we gotta make, so that's why it's a big, a big issue right now. It's just bad timing.
So the, the old. Sister or brother, whatever, gets, gets COVID on day zero, they get tested on day three. Brother, sister, they're ten days or eleven days actually, because that's day zero, it starts right there and they can't come back for another eleven days and they started it. They keep down those symptoms three or four or five days before that, so the kid. I mean. That's.
Take no consideration for whether you're vaccinated.
Yes, there is. If they're vaccinated, they do not have to. Test. Vaccinated individuals do not earn a scholarship from school.
These are ones that's not vaccinated. They're vaccinated, they weren't vaccinated.
I mean, I get, I can see why parents would be upset. I mean, because the logic does go out the little window a little bit if, if it was day five. When they got tested. I mean, I, but.
And we did have one, I don't know, it was right before Thanksgiving. That, yeah, they didn't get tested until it was like day five or day six and. So test to stay wasn't even an option by that point because we didn't have enough time in the ten days left to do three tests, so. They just stayed home for four days and.
Okay. Do we need to vote on it?
We do need an approval of the plan itself, the whole plan, not just that particular section.
I have a question on page six and it's bolded in for some reason. Students will only be allowed to ride on one bus route. They must ride the same bus to and from school. Students may not ride the bus home with someone else unless it is their normal bus. Um. I haven't. I don't see why, why does this mean?
That's been in there since the plan was put in place. It's been bolded since the plan was put in place, so. Year and a half. I will say, with the fact that we're seeing. An increasing basis right now, it's about many fewer kids that we have to test to stay. Because if they're riding one bus in the morning and they're riding one bus in the afternoon and they end up testing positive.
I don't think that this is probably in here because I think the school was company wants this.
No, absolutely not. We put this in here last year as an admin team.
I suggest that we strike this from there because I don't know of another school district that has this rule. And it's not convenient for parents. And it's not good, it's not best for kids. I mean. There are a lot of kids that need to go to somewhere for after-school care that we do not offer as a school district.
So did we add this because of COVID or did we add it?
It was COVID.
It's COVID.
We did it. This is the second school year we're doing that, because I remember it as my kid.
Yeah.
I mean, if it is COVID related, are we to a point where, and we've got test to stay and all this, everything. I mean, if it was truly COVID related.
One of the most common complaints I've received since I've been. I don't see much benefit.
If we were going to remove it, my recommendation would be that they still only get one bus in the morning and one bus in the afternoon. Not switching all of them.
Switching all about.
I agree.
Because it's, it's been a huge safety benefit for us as well. So I mean, that would be the only thing I would say if we're gonna change it, then just do one for AM and one for noon.
That's fine. I don't think we need to let people make, you know, I'm going to Suzie's house today or something, no.
Having a birthday party, so ten friends are coming home on the bus. It's still.
I mean, it's still gonna be the same pretty much, I guess.
Yeah, it's just you have to.
Or change it.
Because you're still not gonna allow that to happen.
When you could have left the last sentence, but take out the.
Sure.
Yeah, they can't ride. Yeah, just take it.
And it was bolded originally because it was a change. I just never.
Okay.
Want that?
Are we okay with everything else?
I just see an influx of questions.
We still need the motion.
Yes.
We need a motion to approve the safe return.
I move that we improve the safe return to inverse construction and continuity of services plan.
Second. Second by tie, in the discussion. All favoritized right hand. Zero motion carries. I have seven point ten, review the district report cards.
I can go through this fairly quickly because you do have it in your packets, but if you have questions, please don't hesitate to stop me. The first slide is just, on each slide you can see where we are in comparison to the state of Missouri. This was for school year twenty twenty-one and so last year we had a district enrollment of six hundred and two. You can see that our attendance rate last year was eighty-seven point three percent. That is down from previous years. I don't think that's unexpected. When you look at the state of Missouri, we're still well above what the state average attendance rate was. And again, there's charts and graphs on there that you can look at as well. Our free and reduced lunch rate last year stayed pretty steady at forty-five point nine, which was right at the state average, so that. Wasn't too different. And then. This discipline chart is a little bit misleading because it's not that we had zero disciplines, which in fact would be nice. When your sample size is so small that you could potentially figure out who the student is because you're such a small district, they just flatline it. So it's not that we had no discipline, but we don't have a lot of out-of-school suspensions and we don't have expulsions. So that's why those are flatlined. And then you can see our gifted percentage. Went up as well last year, that's primarily because we started trying to pull back in and serve some of those junior high and high school kids. That previously weren't necessarily getting served. The next one is on our student outcomes. We had sixty-four graduates last year with a graduation rate of a hundred percent. The state graduation rate was eighty-nine point two percent. Where do our graduates go? Thirty-six. Thirty-six point five percent go to a four-year college, thirty-two point seven to a two-year college. Seven point seven to a technical school. Seventeen point three to employment and then one point nine to military. And so then you can kind of see how that compares as well. Our four-year college, two-year college, technical institution, we're all above the state average. So. That's always nice to see. Our dropout rate, we didn't have a dropout, any dropouts last year. So then you go down and you look at our Missouri Assessment Program results. And you can see how many students took the tests at each grade level. That's what's in that first chart. When you look at the percentage of students at each achievement level, it's a little bit misleading and I'm gonna show you another chart that breaks it down better. And this goes back to, so if I hover over, if you're actually live on the side and you hover over third grade. You're only gonna see they're proficient and basic. That's because again, our percentage in below basic and our percentage in advanced was so low that you could potentially figure out who those kids were. If they showed it to you. So I broke it down so that we could actually look at all of those. So third grade ELA, our percent advanced and proficient was thirty-one point six compared to a Missouri. Average of forty-one point eight. Fourth grade, forty-five point two compared to forty-eight point five for the state. Fifth grade, we had fifty-two point seven compared to a state average of forty-one point eight. Sixth grade, we had a sixty-three point one compared to forty-three point one for the state. Seventh grade was forty-eight point seven compared to forty-one for the state. Eighth grade, fifty-nine point five compared to forty-five point seven for the state. And then English two was fifty percent compared to fifty-four point nine for the state. And so that was ELA. And then you look at math and you can see our numbers there, thirty-six point eight for a grade compared to thirty-seven point two for the state. Forty-two point nine in fourth, thirty-nine point seven for the state. Fifty-two point seven compared to thirty-two point nine. Sixth grade was fifty-four point four compared to thirty-seven point six. Seven, forty-six point two compared to thirty-four point two. Eight, seventy-six point two compared to twenty-seven point three. And then Algebra one, twenty percent compared to thirty-five point six for the state. This column over here is just the difference between our average and the state average. And then you go on down and you can see science as well, thirty-six point nine compared to forty. Forty-five point two compared to thirty-seven point three and forty-four point seven compared to thirty-four point ten. And then our government is the only social studies area that we test in. So that is taken into consideration, all of the scores, not just those that. Don't have small numbers that each.
So in Algebra one is the. Second English class, they could take those at any point, Algebra one could be.
Right.
So we can't just say. So do we think that? That one is. Is that, I hate to say, is that the class or is that something we're doing in those two classes?
A little bit of both. When we, the, the first adjustment we, last year was, first year went to the four-day. And then adjusted curriculums and standards accordingly, plus the old textbooks. So we got through textbooks form, we're adjusting those things. So we, we've rewritten a lot of the curriculum right now to address that. And some of it was, with the students with that class, but. So we had, during that time, we had a lot. They lost that instruction.
So next year, we just need to make a middle note to watch. Yeah, that's great.
Right. And we couldn't make any of this public until after December first, but the administrators had known this information since probably the first part of October. Because I wanted them to be able to start making those adjustments. For December. Overall. We definitely, yes, we have a couple areas that need work, but most of our. The vast majority of ours were above the state average and some of them significantly above the state average. So hats off to our teachers who. Have done a great job of overcoming. You know, being shut down for COVID for a quarter and COVID absences and so. And the next slide on the report card has to do with educator data. So compared to the state, you can kind of see seventeen to one, basically, student to classroom teacher ratio. We're at two hundred and one to one for students to administrators, which is a little bit over the state average. And then we're a little bit under the state average. Our years of experience of professional staff, our average is ten point eight and state was thirteen point one. And you can see our base salary compared to the state average. We're at thirty-nine, five oh seven and the state average was fifty-one, four ninety-two. So quite a gap there. Administrator salaries, our average was seventy-seven, eight twenty-two. The state average was ninety-six, eight fifteen. So again, quite a gap there as well. Staff with advanced degrees, we have forty-nine point four, state average was sixty-two point six. The next data is really more just Title One related. Kind of that, sorry. And then the final one has to do with district finances. We're about forty-nine percent locally funded, thirty-three point six state and seventeen percent federal. Funded, our assessed valuation, you can see, has steadily increased over the last five years. And then you can see our tax rate compared to the average tax rate. Last year, our adjusted tax rate was two point eight one eight nine compared to three point five oh six six for the adjusted tax rate average for the state. Our current, last year, per people expenditure was six hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirteen cents. The state average was one thousand four hundred and six dollars and ninety-six cents. And then our September membership, you could see last year was five ninety-six point three eight. So those are all the things that go into the district report card. If you have questions, there is a memo in your. In your packets where if you wanna see this information on your own line, you can just click on that link and go straight to it.
Thank you. Next round of reading will be January the eighteenth. The sixth hearing. This time we'll entertain a motion to. Go into closed session.
I have a question. First, what, what is the status of our audit?
It has not been completed as of yet. I talked to them last week and they, only thing we're working on is that hope to. Have it done as soon as possible.
We need to have it completed before the twelve thirty-one, correct?
If it's not completed by December thirty-first, they will withhold your next month's formula payment until it is submitted. Well, the goal is definitely by the thirty-first, but I don't have it yet. Last year's February, so hopefully it won't be February.
I mean, I've heard other schools, I mean, I guess there's. There's other schools that it's taken a while too. I just didn't know if we needed to plan to have a special meeting or.
I had asked them if they thought they would have it done by the twenty-eighth, and he said, I don't know. So I will reach out again tomorrow or Friday if it looks like they could have it and we can have a special meeting at the end of the month. Well, we'll definitely do that.
I make a motion that we go into closed session. Uh, to discuss topics allowed at six one oh point oh two one RSMO, eleven point one, eleven point two and eleven point three.
Oh.
No.
You gotta use section one, one legal.
Oh, section one legal, section one eleven two.
Three.
Oh, section three personnel and section thirteen personnel records.
And section, and student note six.
And student note six.
Yeah, motion by, second.
Second.
We'll call, Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi. Yes. Yes.
Yes.